You are good to go.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Almost evening. It's August 21st, 2023. This is the GBS 2024 Budget Work Session Number Two. The Gurwood Board of Supervisors, its committees and subcommittees are subject to the Alaska Open Meetings Act as found in Alaska Statute 44.62.310 and Anchorage Municipal Code 1.25, public meetings. The Gurwood Board of Supervisors operates under the Gurwood Public Meeting Standards of Conduct. I'll call this meeting to order at 5:02. I'm Brianna Sullivan, Co-Chair and Fire Department Supervisor, also in the room.
I'm Jennifer Wingard, Co-Chair and Management Supervisor.
I'd like to take a little bit of... Parks and Secretary Supervisor.
Thank you, guys. And on my mic in the end.
Mike Edgington, Housing and Economic Development Supervisor.
Amanda Sassy, Roads, Utilities and Public Safety Supervisor.
Great. Thank you, everyone. Are there any disclosures today? Being and hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Also moved. We have a second?
Second.
Second by guy. Any objections? Okay, I'll go by a sense. The agenda is approved. Announcements. The public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comment. Please raise your hand. It needs to be acknowledged. Help discussions stay productive. Please direct your comments to the board rather than other members of the public and keep your comments focused on the business under discussion. Please be respectful of everyone's opinions. Number one, capital budgets.
Yep. Pull that up there. Well, first off, I'll bring up, we just got an updated report on the Gurwood area fund balance. So, and we get these about this time of year. I will state that this balance, fund balance, isn't fully audited yet. The city's still going through that, which means they haven't closed out the books for '22. It's a staffing issue. You might have heard that they've had to outsource to have enough accountants to finish out the year. But the person that we work with closely on this every year, she says, your service area probably not going to change much. And it'll be more with the Anchorage Bowl area. But the Gurwood Fund Balance, our 106 fund, you can see here, our total right now is just close to 1.25 million. And then we always have a little set aside for our bond rating designation. So that's a reserve there of 250,000, 251,000, round up. And then we have a capital reserve. So this is like our emergency fund. This is what we tapped into with the Halloween storm when we had to get repairs and we pulled money from this fund. We have 608,000 sitting there for catastrophe. So that could definitely get us started on it. And then sometimes, like we did for the Halloween storm, we had to find out other forms of funding to get us there to pay all our bills in the end before we got, luckily, in that case, it was a reimbursement from the state since it was Declaration of Emergency. And so this shows you that all these funds have been recharged since then. And right now, we have a remaining 390,000 in there, which is undesigned, so it's available for capital usage. I will state that 80,000 of that is for Engine 41, since we didn't pay any principal or interest rates last year on 41. That fell into our undesigned account. And so, you know, I can explain this later, but I'll touch on it briefly now. We had a whole finance discussion last Friday about Engine 41. And what the municipality is doing right now is they're pulling from the municipality cash pool to pay for Engine 41 upfront, along with the other five engines for AFD. It's part of the deal, which got them a discount. They're paying for with Rosenbaum upfront for the six engines. And then, once the engine is completed and we take ownership of it, then we will pull out a loan for it. And the board approved a loan for it. But by the time we get to that, which will probably be 2025, January, by the time we receive the engine, because it takes a year for these things to be made, we just, now we're going to get in line. We may have reserves built up, because right now, we have another, in the budget we're asking for this year, we're asking for another 80,000 to go towards Engine 41, which was supposed to be for loan payments. It's actually more in that in the budget, and we'll get to that there. But we could take these reserves and then pay more on principal and then have less of a loan by the time that engine is ready. So that's kind of all in play. But we know now that the city is going to work with us. They're going to give us a cash pool draw at no interest. And then we're going to, once we get done, we'll take out the loan and then move forward with it. So that's just an overview right now. So we have 390,000 undesigned account that we can use for capital usage here in the valley. Move down here. This is kind of, we're kind of going to skip over this. I want to come back to that. Actually, yeah, we'll come back to that, because I really want to discuss what the, we'll talk about capital real quick. The GBS has gone through capital, so I just want to highlight the priorities in each one of the capitals here. It's in the packet tonight. And these are the different areas for parks. So, you know, right now, we are working through the design and build package for the new Glacier Creek Bridge to replace the hand tramp. So that is in progress. We have that funding in place. We have a total of about 1.8 million set for that. And those are all grants that we've received from, one through CARES Act and then the other one from the State of Alaska through their capital program. And tonight, we'll be presenting to you the 35% plans, so you can see what that bridge looks like. And we're running that right now through Trails Committee and land use. So GBS will be the third presentation this month that we've done on that. And so those two first lines are our priorities right now. And then the next one is the Lions Club Park and building a new pavilion there, which would be dedicated to John Trautner. And so we're working with Lions Club on that. We have finished design and our estimates are coming in for construction somewhere between 100 and 150,000 for that. That would be a pavilion on a concrete slab built on grade. So we are going to really organize that campaign this fall and then try through the winter to reach match. We probably will come to GBS, ask for a match, and then we're going to seek grants as well for that there. And then the other things down the road for us, kind of, once we get through these larger projects here first, will be master planning for both Forester Park and then the Aliaska Playfield and Conex Storage Area. Lead us there. And then eventually redevelopment of the Aliaska Playfield, a possible dog park. One thing we probably will bring up earlier than later is the resurfacing of the tennis courts to keep up with that out there. And talking about that possibly for '24, maybe at least '25 at the latest. And then the batting cage, we're happy to report that there's been some great personal fundraising for the baseball field. So we're going to try to do most of the batting cage through the funds that have been raised for Slaton Moles Memorial. And for the namesake, he's the namesake of the field out there. So we just received another 5,000, close to $5,000 from a golf tournament by R&amp;M Consultants. And the beneficiary was the Slaton Moles family. So we're trying to work through that. If there's no questions about parks, I'll jump through roads real quick. Roads, once again, the highlighted in yellow are our priorities, as we've talked about in previous meetings. We have completed one of these fish culverts. I'm happy to report the one on Lake Hood has been completed. So that is one off our list. And we are looking towards next summer to find a way to complete the second one. Western did a great job with the install of the Lake Hood one, excuse me, the Lake Tahoe one on Lake Tahoe Road. And we want to try to tackle the, the lower Davos, the one where it comes right out into Glacier Creek next, and then work up to Mount Hood from there. So the next two are very much, quite a bit more expensive, because we have to lower the water line in the sections. We have to go in there, dig down, divert the creek around, and to lower the water line, put this new culvert in. It will be a pretty significant culvert. It should handle, easily handle some of those 500 storm, 500-year storms that we talked about and go in there. So we'll be looking at that. But the cost will be quite a bit more, close to 600,000 for that one, whereas the one we just did was close to 200,000. But actually, it should be much less due to the savings that Western was able to incur with some redesign of the project as, once we got into it. And then we still have on here, we have the pedestrian safety corridor. We're along Alberg. We've been chasing grants on that as well. We will maybe talk about getting that in our 2023 operating budget. We've gotten a quote from Western, and I think there's some things that can be worked out there, but we will take a look at that. And then power to the service area lot, we are working on that. We've got a full design done for bringing the power to the bowl rail so that we can plug in the equipment in the winter. Now, we're just waiting on Chugash to give us plans to bring a transformer to the lot. And so, once we see that and the costs on that, then we can see what we can do to maybe get some progress moving forward on that this fall. Most likely, the way things are going with construction schedules, probably try to tackle that next spring at this point and just stay with the power source that we have currently. And then we're working on the paved timberline pass veil intersection study in that area. So we will have something to the board in the fall, which will give you a very solid cost estimate on what that will cost to pave that section of road. And then we talk about funding it for the future after that. The other things are on our wish list really at this point, so, but not a priority. So. And then fire, we're tackling the top three items right now, especially in what I don't have up here, because these four items haven't arrived in the shop yet, but they're getting there, is the other one is Rescue 41, which isn't within the fire service area. It's an area-wide funded vehicle for EMS and, and really gets used a lot on the highway outside our service area. So that is in production. The utility and Chief 41 rigs are here, but there's parts missing. So they're just waiting on those things to arrive so everything can get fully assembled and put into action hopefully this fall. We hope, fingers crossed, toes crossed. And then Engine 41 that we just spoke about, that's in action. And we'll hopefully see that at the beginning of 2025 on that aspect. And at this time, no capital purchases for the police department, but we are working through the improvement for the substation. So I did hear back from ACS about that, and they said they're working on it and waiting on some numbers to come in. So hopefully, I'll have something next month to talk about for costs for the changes there. They're mostly just minor, more efficiency for their alcohol testing for DUIs and things like that. So anyways, that's just a quick overrun of our capital program for Gurwood. And so I'll open up any questions before we kind of bounce forward.
Any questions? Guy?
That pavilion, you're not going to ask for funds during this budget cycle?
I would ask for it separate from, because in this budget cycle, I'm just asking for operating. And so this would be a capital request, so I could come through the board at any point in time for that. We have the funding and capital. We just haven't designated it yet. And so we really want to try to get the partners involved here. We're trying to actually work with both civic organizations, Lion and Rotary, to partner towards this. And then them using their network to hopefully get donations from, you know, the prime example is Black Backroads Travel. They use the park all the time for their picnic thing. And so we've talked with Lions Club to say, hey, you should approach them to see if they would be willing to donate, because they, they would get the best benefit out of a pavilion being there, especially on rainy days. So, so those type of things. So it's really for us to finish the summer season. We're so busy with fieldwork right now. We'll get to sit down with them in September, October, and come up with a fundraising program. And really like get ready for Christmas bazaar and the different things going forward. So, so, yeah.
Mike?
Yeah, I got two questions. The first one was, is there a, is the drainage study for roads still in this list? I don't recall seeing it, but you might have just skipped over. I might have just not been...
No, we don't have it on the list.
Okay. That's, I know that's been on there for a long while in the past. Is it something that should be there?
It probably should be. And I'll add that back in. I don't know what happened with that, but I do, we've talked about that. I think I kind of stalled out on it, because I really wanted to get Bill Spencer, who had done the original study, to come back and, and update it. And now I'm hearing Bill's back. He's like semi-retired, so he may be able to come help us with that. But, yeah, we can put that back in there and then I'll try to get an idea of what cost is.
If that was in there, would that be a priority for this year? Because to some extent, it's sort of a prerequisite for some of the other things we're looking at.
I think a priority for this year is trying to tackle all the projects that we have complete plans for. So veil and the Aliaska Drainage, you know, we've, we've put in so much effort and money into getting those shovel ready. Now, it's really like trying to get them. So getting the Lake Tahoe is accomplishment, but we still got two more to do. And I think those are real focus for us at this point.
Because we already have the plan, we already have the design ready for those. We don't need any planning. So the planning would really be for the things that follow that, correct?
Correct, yeah. So then we would go look at, we would go look at the different things. And, and, you know, one issue that we're having some difficulty with, and it's a good time to talk about it, is the Rouen replacement for the culvert there. And we basically, it seems like, you go to Lisa Murkowski's website, that we've been given the money, but then you talk to them and then they're like, well, you're not really, we have to go through some more approvals. But they sold it on their website like it was a done deal. And so I had our capital person reach out to them in June, and that's what they came back with. And we're supposed to get some update now in August. So we're kind of bird dogging it. But, you know, if anybody's got a direct line to Lisa Murkowski and can put some influence on it. It says right on our website that we've been given this grant, but it doesn't, we're not, then we talked to staff and like, well, you're not really given the grant, you know? It's pledge versus donate, I guess, in that aspect. So they pledged it.
I mean, the end of the financial year is end of September, so perhaps that's something that is in, and it might be worth us following up. I mean, we could perhaps just write a letter and send that officially.
Yep, that's true. Yep, we can work on that. I'll find out from our capital person what the latest notice is and then maybe get back to the board.
Okay. And sorry, one last thing on the, one last thing on the drainage study. Is that, would the drainage study be helpful or even necessary before we talk about the timberline? That first section of timberline, or is it that, again, is the drainage issue there solved?
I think the first section, we don't have as much of a drainage issue on the timberline section that we're talking about. I think if we were to go beyond Alpine, Alpina and start looking towards, you know, down towards Alta that way, then we would be crossing some major drainage there. So it may be worth looking at it at that point. But it really, it's just road drainage in the section that we're considering at this point in time.
Okay. I might, my second, that was just one question. My second question, if that's okay?
Go ahead.
Yeah. My second question is, there is a sort of capital improvement project process that goes through that all of the sort of community councils and it goes up to the, goes up to the assembly, which in the past, we have not been part of. I'm wondering if any of these, are any of these things where we would want or expect to get funding from elsewhere in the municipality, or are these all things that we're going to fund ourselves?
We do have, we do, we do have a few of these things on the list. And particularly, I know that the Aliaska Creek drainages are on the list. We did receive an email that Kathy Geisel was going to go and tour her district, but when I looked into it, they're not going to go any further than Potter's Marsh. So I've reached out separately to Lisa, because she attends our meetings, not Lisa, Kathy, getting the senators mixed up here. And Senator Geisel asked her, you know, if you come down, I'd love to take you over and show you those, because we have them on capital requests to the state.
So that's true for, I understand that's the capital request to the state. There's also a capital request for the, within the municipality itself, which in the past, we haven't typically made use of. And I'm wondering which of these we should, it's mostly something which kind of gives awareness to the assembly. So when it comes to future, you know, distributions, they're aware of the list coming from different parts of the municipality. And because we're kind of in this different space from the community council, I know we have alternative ways of, of making this available. But I think the, I think it might be helpful if we get these added in as well. So perhaps we can take this document and get it added into the municipal CIP list. That's the internal one rather than the one out to the state.
We could do that. You know, a lot of those projects on there are going to be put to bond initiative. So whereas we're, we don't typically run for bonds, so I guess, basically, I, most of the time, if you're sending up a request that we're going to self-fund a project, then the assembly usually is supportive at 99% of the time.
Yeah, that's why I was asking which of these may we not self-fund, because the, the CIP list is a combination of both bond funding and also, you know, other funding that comes from, at least in the past, it's come from sort of one-off sources. And if, you know, if something appears that potentially could be used on roads, they look at that list and sometimes it gets allocated that way. Roads is probably a poor example, but there are, there are other examples where money comes through that way. So having it on the list just raises awareness. And we've had the problem before of when we asked for, when we've asked for things, the question always has come back, is it on the CIP list? And we have to say no.
Well, how about we put it to your October meeting and then you guys can make a determination if you want to do that.
Excellent, yep. Thanks, that was it.
Thank you, Mike. And do you have something?
Oh, I just wanted to mention, we have a few items which are on an area-wide request for capital, which are unfunded, just that they don't show up here because they're funded. They, we're requesting them through area-wide sources, not through fire service area sources.
Thank you. I think we're ready for number two on the list.
Before we do that, and usually what we do, and it's just, I forgot to put on the agenda, is just an overview of our tax structure. And I just do this each one so that people understand before we get into it, what we did. And I, last time, I didn't have these numbers updated for you, so you understood kind of where we're at here. So this year, I did an example of a house that is, has assessed value of 795,000. And what it looks like with a owner occupancy exemption credit. In the past, I've done without the exemption credit, but this year I did with the exemption credit. So a house of this value would receive an exemption credit of $942. So normally, their taxes would be 990, close to $10,000. But they would receive a credit of $942, bringing their taxes down to just over $9,000. And so then, what does that fund? And so in this case, it funds just point, you know, four tenths of the mill rate for area-wide. So as we talked about, area-wide covers a plethora of services that Gurwood is part of, one being EMS, another being the library and the dog catcher, and the people who paint the line and take care of the signs, code enforcement, things like that. So that house would be paying $28 towards the area-wide. And most years, on average, the area-wide is negative, whereas funding for the area-wide comes in from other sources like rental cars, bed tax, tobacco tax, different sources, fuel tax out there, which funds it. So in good tourism years, you'd see the mill rate usually being negative. So that's actually a rebate back to the, to the property taxpayer. The largest service overall that's funded by property tax is the school district, which is 61%. Their mill rate is 7.17. So this house would be paying close to $5,200 for the school district for the year. And then for the Gurwood service area, that would be 5.35 mill rate. So this house will be paying just over, you know, 38, $3,800. And under that, you know, that didn't get split up down below. And down below, I'm showing you what our estimated mill rate is for this year, based on our 23 assessments. We probably will see the assessments just go up a bit, because we've had so many new builds and then the real estate market has slowed, but prices still have slowly, haven't slowed down completely, rising. So we'll probably see this mill rate go down when the new assessments come out. But with that, you can see for the 5.35, we cover street maintenance, fire, police, parks and rec under that. And then you can see how they're split up there with the different mill rates. And then, so a house like this for fire service will pay $1,600 for the year. 1,300, you know, close to $1,400 for street maintenance, police, close to $800, and then parks and rec, $300. So the total is, you know, 4,052 they pay for the year for all four of those services. And then you can see the calculation, how bills are determined based on the value and, and the rate of your house. And so these are the different things that your taxes pay for there in those areas. And so for area-wide, you can see the different things in there. And then school district, K through 12, and the services associated with the school district, and then police, fire, and things like that. So. So overall, how do we compare? We have the fifth lowest tax rate or tax mill in the municipality out of something like 50 different districts. And then when you compare us against other districts that have the same services, so police, fire, parks and rec, and road maintenance, we are the lowest compared to the rest of the districts out there. So, and I think here in the packet tonight, there is a mill rate chart in there, if you like to compare how we look against other districts. So, so that's just an overview of our taxes and, and how, what the money pays for in the different areas that it pays for.
Thank you, Kyle.
Yep.
Any other questions from the board?
Sorry, backtrack just one little bit. I had a note to myself. Did I hear correctly that you said Engine 41? It doesn't look like we're going to actually see the thing until January 2025.
They tell us it's going to be December 2024, but we, the way we know things work, we're hoping that it's here in '25.
Because sometime in the course of '25?
We're hoping first quarter.
So, you know, we received the command vehicles in February. If you don't have them yet, great. So, okay. So it takes time for them to do whatever magic they do on their radios and whatever else they have to do. So I would say, even if we're supposed to get it in December, we might not see it until January.
Okay, thank you.
There's so many unique parts to these different engines and apparatuses. It's pretty amazing how much it takes to get them together.
People can understand.
And then there's people involved.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay. When you're ready, number two is the fire department budget.
Okay. So this is the budget you saw at the first meeting. With some reductions based on talking to Kyle, Kelly after the meeting. So what you see here basically is where we ended up. I reduced the training level to the same training amount as last time. I took out, I had it there, replacement of the mud rescue tools, because they sort of were aging up. But as Kyle pointed out to me, we don't have any mud in the Gurwood service area. So I've taken that out as well. So, so long would that been, other than adding in the financial audit? And that the non-labor costs are pretty, almost very similar to last year. And then the labor cost is what it is. We do know that we, I took my first stab at putting in a budget for area-wide EMS. And as we were previously told, they are not accepting any new changes, so we will be upgrading to 2022 EMS budget. My expectation on this is that when we run out of funds, if we do in a year, then I will, like other contractors, request an increase based on actual costs that we provided. So I'm not going to reduce our staffing level based on the fact that they won't properly fund it. So I'm just putting that out there. That's how I plan to do this. The other thing, as we may all recall, is that since the last number of, number of months, they do not do, AFD does not do station move-ups anymore for fire or ambulances as they were. So once we lose staffing, once both ambulances are gone, there's no backup for that third call. And the third call, we're requiring usually the ambulance to come from town. So an example would be, so that's why I'm trying to ensure that we have staffing in place versus relying on backfill. That, now that, I just threw in some EMS stuff, but EMS and fire, although we're only talking about fire today, is related. Because when we lose our EMS, when everyone's on an EMS call, we'll lose our fire staffing. So that's what it is. So the core staffing model is, and you're just looking at the fire park, is three to be, initial staffing of six. three to be initial staffing of six, is three firefighters on call, three firefighters on shift, Monday to Friday, four on shift, Monday to Saturday, Sunday, with the rest of complement made up by part-time on-call volunteers.
Any questions for Chief Weston?
Guy.
And I should I should also recognize Amanda Tullis here as our fire department representative.
Thank you, Amanda, for being here.
Is that, was that under EMS, your annual testing for the firefighters? That you were gonna implement for insurance purposes or just a long-term testing?
Medical testing?
Yeah.
Medical testing is fully included here in the fire budget, the firefighter medicals. I could split it out between not any EMS, but it might, I would be quite happy to split it between fire and EMS. I just don't know the, I've already been told they're not gonna give us any more funding.
Because then that means you're dealt insurance.
No, that under professional services includes firefighter, that fifty thousand there includes firefighter medicals, legal fees, and financial audit. So it's under professional services, not labor. I did previously take a run at this with AFD and point out to them that I believe that some of their firefighter medicals were paid by area-wide EMS, but I wasn't given the attraction.
So one thing I'll, you know, and this will go for all the budgets tonight, is that we have a directive coming down from the mayor's office that they want to see budgets flat or reduced this year for for twenty twenty-four, that they're gonna present to the assembly. And what we're doing tonight is with the board is we're giving the realistic aspect of what we're dealing with on the ground without cutting our operations and knowing that we have sort of large things coming. And I think Chief Weston, as well as presenting that tonight, and what we're trying to tackle and, you know, we're all dealing with inflation. And we can't ignore the fact that that affects our operations, but there's sort of a political dance, I think, going on between the assembly and the mayor's office. And and so we may end up submitting these budgets, depending on whatever the GBS approves, and there's some sort of increase in there. We may get some stiff pushback from the administration. So I think we're trying to get to the point is, is put into your thinking, what message you want to send up to the administration as to why you feel these increases are supported by the board? If the board does support increases for twenty-four. So we just want to give you the heads up on that because that's, we're hearing that from other service districts. Usually the areas like Eagle River and Gerwood aren't really affected by these mandates, but it seems like they're going across the board this year, as we saw with our EMS request to the AFD this year. They've already told us that they're gonna submit a flat budget. So so it's gonna become more of a sort of a political decisions instead of operations or staff's decision. Which it always is, but in this case, it's gonna be more this year.
Okay, Kyle. Mike has a question?
Yeah, Kyle, when you say you're hearing that from other service areas, are you hearing that from other service areas with an elected board?
Yes.
So road service areas, for example?
Yeah, like the park district for Eagle River.
Okay, I don't think the park, I think park district's appointed. I don't think it's elected, but I might be wrong.
They might be appointed, but I think they they come from community councils, so.
Right.
Yep.
Because what, I mean, I think it will be interesting if the if the mayor's office or OMB doesn't submit the budget we submit to them, to the assembly. That will be an interesting situation.
Yeah, that's why I'll make it aware.
Ultimately, the decision's made by the assembly, not by the mayor's office.
Correct. But we've gotten the past, we have gotten pushback when we've submitted things to OMB. That was at the direction, but usually we were able to talk it out with board, you know, with the support of the board behind us.
Understood. Thanks. Thanks for the warning.
Yes, thank you. Anything else from the board? We could go to Jennifer.
Yeah, what a question.
So I'm thinking about this fire department, three percent of the cost of living increase. I guess I don't see where that is.
Oh, that's included in the staffing costs, the personnel costs.
Thank you for that. Okay. Okay, to go number three, housing economic stability budget. We had that last time, so this time it's on.
I don't, we didn't, I guess we're looking towards the board as to what you would like to see in that because I didn't have anything that really work off of to. I mean, I could I could present a random number, but I have nothing to really say, okay, what are we trying to fund with this budget?
So we had a, sorry.
Okay, Mike and Jennifer?
Thanks. We got a approximate cost for a housing action plan or an implementation plan earlier on this year before the before Prop seven was went to the voters. So we have at least a different number from there, but this would just be putting in a budget. It wouldn't be committing to spending anything. So if we want a placeholder, we could start from that.
Sure. I mean, just give me a number and I can put together.
I think it was, my recollection is it's eighty thousand, but I'll confirm that and and share that information with you.
He said?
Eight zero. Eighty thousand dollars, so eight zero.
And would would you tell me again what the name of the study was?
That was for a housing implementation plan.
Okay.
It probably would be less than that. That was just a ballpark figure, and I was assuming that some of the work that's actually going to be done under the area plan would be done under the housing action plan. So it'd probably be a lower number, but it's just a number to put in a starting point for a budget.
Yeah.
And then Jennifer?
So I checked with the co-chairs of the Housing Economic Committee today, and I understood that there there is no current plan, there's no quest for this money yet. There's no, they haven't decided on anything. And I checked both of them. There's not, there's. I am very uncomfortable with kind of putting a line, I am already in a placeholder number on something that the committee hasn't asked for yet. And has, and to my mind, it's not well-defined. But also, Prop seven was passed would be promise, and I do mean promise, that it's not gonna increase taxes. And so as soon as we do this right away, that feels disingenuous to me. So I I am not comfortable putting a placeholder. Because that, this needs to come from the committee with a very set framework, a solid understanding of what it's, what it's for, why and when.
Guy?
I have a question. For the cemetery committee, when they had large expenses like this, today, was that included in the operating budget? Or was it pulled out of capital budget, you know, went for that big plan that they had developed? Did they have an eighty thousand dollar yearly operating budget that they?
Was it, it wasn't a yearly operating budget, but we, I think we did a one-time draw that funded us doing the feasibility study for that. And and then after that, we didn't ask for additional tax dollars to pay for it. Yep.
Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, I just couldn't say, really in response to triggered by both what Jennifer and Guy said, the housing implementation plan would be probably a capital item, not a operations item. So it'd probably go under the capital expenditure rather than the operational expenditure. I don't think there's any operational items we've identified yet. But obviously, we're setting a budget now until the end of twenty twenty-four. So if there's anything at all that we want to do in the next, what's that, sixteen months? We need to allocate something now, or just pull things off or do things outside the budget, which is also possible.
One idea, well, one thing that we would probably look for is for the board to determine, are you gonna pull that cap? I agree, it should be a capital. That's where it ended up for the for the cemetery. But are we going to ask for a contribution coming from the taxpayers in twenty-four to fund that capital project? Or will the board consider pulling funds from somewhere else in our capital project? You know, we we have funds associated with different departments, but it's not designated yet to projects. Another consideration is, do you look at the undesigned fund to pull funds from to that aspect? And then a third thing to consider is that you could either put the requests in now with the twenty-four budget, or you could wait until you get better for clarification through this process with the Housing Economic Advisory Committee. And then with first quarter revisions, determine if you want to make a draw at that point in time, either as taxpayer-funded or using the different sources of funding that we have liquid available right now. So that it, there's some options there and flexibility to consider how you fund what you're gonna do with this budget.
Thank you for that explanation. Mike?
The option of making the decision in first quarter budget revision is always very attractive, except we never know what the what the close of, you know, twenty twenty-three is at that point. Typically, we don't find out till several months later when it comes to at least capital. We should, hopefully, we will know what the what the operational side is, but not necessarily the capital and not designated fund side. So I don't necessarily disagree with that as a as a suggestion. I think they're all valid options, but just a just a caveat.
Anything else? Jennifer?
I I just, I want to re-read that I want to see this come from the committee. Obviously, a request for a project with a dollar amount from the committee before you provide a class fund. It just feels like that's that's not the right, that's not fiduciary responsibility. And it's also, we specifically set up this committee to do a certain job. I think we should let them do it.
Thank you, Jennifer. If that is a good start for our topic on number three, so let's go to number four, budget, roads budget.
Sure. Okay, so the roads budget, we do have a small increase, basically a three percent cost of living with our personnel services. I think we will probably only see the cost of living increase with Margaret's payroll because she's on a union contract. I'm an executive employee, and I don't think the mayor's gonna, for political reasons, give executive employees bumps this year. So so it's it's written in here right now, but it just shows about five thousand dollar increase in that aspect. It is always difficult for me to even estimate sometimes what these medical and dental, you know, health benefit costs will be. But they usually fluctuate just a bit each year in different ways. So those will probably go up as well, but right now I'm showing them flat, as I don't really know where that's gonna go. Our non-labor, I am keeping it flat for this year. And I'm asking for the increase in our capital funding to keep tacking away and building reserves. And then also knocking out some of these capital projects, one being the Davos, Aliaska Creek, Culver next year, which will be significantly more than the Lake Tahoe one. So I'm asking for a hundred thousand dollar increase there. We have increased this over the years. We started at one twenty-five, we went to two hundred last year, and I'm asking for another hundred thousand this year. I do feel it's important that the fund continues to be healthy. And since we don't really have the mechanism for bonding, we don't have success with that. This is the way the service area at this point in time is doing it, and it's working. It just takes a little bit longer. And so, but overall, the IGCs are just flat from last year, as that always is dictated by OMB. And so you can see the overall increase here would be a hundred and five thousand. And and then our mill rate right now, based on twenty-three's, is one point nine-six for this budget.
Questions for Kyle on roads? I think this is a very trivial question, but on the ombudsman, was there zero in twenty twenty-two or it just walked down?
It was zero in twenty-two. So that IGC, I think because they got so busy with Gerwood complaints, we started getting a charge from the ombudsman.
Well, yeah, I was just looking at that and thinking that person was very busy this entire year in acreage.
Yes, and still continues to be with Gerwood items.
Questions? Thank you, Kyle. Great explanation on roads. Next is parks and rec.
Parks and rec. Start from the bottom and go up. It's always good luck, so I had to make sure what I'm saying here. We are asking for, once again, increase this associated with capital, going from a hundred thousand to two hundred thousand, and just growing that fund strong so that we can start tackling some of those priority capital projects and getting ready for things down the road. And so otherwise, we're looking at keeping things flat. I did move numbers around within the budget, but it still keeps our operational numbers the same. But what it does is it takes money from non-labor and moves it up into labor. We're hoping to retain our two guys that we have this year for our seasonal staff. They've been excellent and love to get them back next year. And we may need to do a promotion for one of the, make them a seasonal caretaker too, so they match. And then it just puts more funding towards that area and hopefully keep them further into October. And so we took that money from what we'd usually pay for SCA group to come in and do work that these guys are doing. Instead of having a shot of like three weeks where they got all the work done, these guys would play it out over the summer to get it completed for us. So I think it's somewhere down here. We're taking, yeah, right here, contracted services. So going from thirty-nine thousand to twenty-four and putting that money up into non-lab, up into labor. But in the end, it gets us back to the same operating budget, just with the hundred thousand dollar increase going to our capital improvement fund for current and future projects.
Thank you, Kyle. Any questions on parks and rec? Go ahead if you have any. Remuneration's in red because they flat, we're predicting?
We're predicting it to be flat, but it could be, you know, it depends on what happens. It could go up.
Yes, Jennifer.
Yeah, can we talk about, one more time, help me to flog this, but can we talk one more time about like when, where, and how we would increase rates? I know I said to you both the thing that that the municipal, acreage municipal library is charging thirty dollars an hour for a room. So it seemed like if we did raise to twenty, that would be perfectly reasonable because this room is every bit as lovely as what's being offered in the non-care use all throughout the
Correct.
The municipal library. So could you just clarify for me, like, when and how that would happen?
Well, I think what we've been doing is an internal discussion along with Guy and Margaret and I to look at our user base and what the impact would be on the user base if we did increase it. And I think what we do is, we probably would make that a standalone suggestion to the board to say, hey, we're gonna increase this. And we were kind of looking at maybe a two-stage where nonprofits that use the room maybe stay at the current rate. We look at standard users and commercial groups that use the group, they get the rate increase. And I think it's a good thing to start with, and then also looking across the board at all our facilities after that. But first, starting with the room. So I think what, I think, and Guy, feel free to jump in here too. I think what we would do is bring a proposal to the board separately to say, hey, here's what we're thinking about for rental rates increase.
I was just a little concerned here. And here's, I did a request, like, who uses the room that much? And we do fund a lot of nonprofits, and it just seems like we're gonna raise our rates and then they're just gonna give us the money right back. So I was just concerned. And then there's, I guess, micro businesses, you know, that operate, you know, small. This is a key. You know, more so just nonprofits. You know, more so just a nonprofit. I don't, I don't see, you know, a need to, uh, if we do support it, that money is just going to come right back to us. And I, I don't know about like a two-tiered or like two different things, you know, how much extra work that'd be for you guys to keep track, probably a nonprofit. But now, that's not an issue, you know, that might be going to go. Is that going to be a bookkeeping nightmare and they have to prove it? You know, some of the audits, we come back and, you know, for some, so then this could all maybe work. And then do we need it too? We need these revenues, I guess. That's another question as well.
Thank you, Guy. Just the thought I had since last meeting was talking about the campsites and the, uh, discussion there, that this was a room that was getting improved and has a, a cost to operate and keep warm and clean and all the other things. And accounting for inflation could be raised as a separate item, I guess, with those. And a lot of things seem to be, um, charged per head or per person. I don't know if that would work for this kind of situation either. I think some of Four Valleys classes, obviously it's per person, so then they, they make a certain amount per person. That's a nonprofit, that's one that'd be fun.
One thing that maybe we should do on our end is talk with the other districts, uh, Chugiak and, and Anchorage Bowl and see what they've done for their pricing. You know, if they done, if they've considered pricing increases and maybe the reasons why they did it or didn't do it. And then maybe that's part of coming back into separate discussion is to bring that to the board and say, okay, here's what we're seeing across the municipality. Cause you know, $30 a room is something to consider and, and, um, you know, it might be just worth saying, how are your nonprofits handling that in that aspect because, you know?
So the room, uh, and then the room goes to, the revenue goes to this budget, that is the parking fee.
Park fees go to this budget. We could, we could slide in the both, but we just split it between the two budgets. But, um, but originally it's always been in Rhodes because Rhodes were the dominant item spoken by G B O S and this room was created for G B O S. And so it, that's, that's how it ended up there in historical matter. So, so yeah, it does end up in the, the Rhodes budget there.
I'm sorry, what ends up in the Rhodes budget?
The fees for this room.
Oh.
Yeah, that's the only thing we actually get any revenue for Rhodes.
Yes.
Cause we'll do, I, I'm not sure it's accurate to say that, that, I understand where you're coming from with like, kind of raising the rate and then taking it right back with things like Four Valleys. That's Four Valleys, it looks to me like it's a main organization. But some of the other nonprofits here, we've got church-related and A A and A S D. We're not giving any money at all to those. And so out of the, I, I'm seeing for August, three Four Valleys Community School Programs, 37 private programs. Um, and then these 19 fitness classes that are essentially profit, small business, um, could go under Four Valleys, but it still looks to me like the majority, you know, that I understand maybe making a break for Four Valleys, especially because we have a kind of a special relationship with automatic funding to them. Um, but I, I do think it's been so long since we've had a rate increase. We are substantially under market compared to going rate in Anchorage, providing, uh, a service that is in no way, uh, inferior. And then we have, I, I know some upgrades that we need to do to the room and we're under pressure to keep our budgets flat. So I just, I don't know how much revenue it would actually raise, but it at least maybe show the good faith effort in trying to do something. I don't know. But I, I, I think, I think $10 rooms, $10 per hour for this level of rooms is, uh, way under market.
I guess it does end up in the version of government generating revenue, you know. I have a lot of clients, we pay $10,000 to DC every year, you know. Seem to raise the rates and, and, you know, it's, and I know this is, you know, so it just kind of makes me a little nervous. So just why, you know, what, what are we going to gain for an extra $20? You know, when we're, with the community, I thought was here for community and supporting what we do here.
What's a good question? How much extra, do we know how much extra we would raise?
Well, based on, I think what you're looking at there, there was only one program that wasn't like locally generated and that wouldn't potentially fall under Four Valleys. So you could double that one program in the month.
Sweet, but the church-related ones in the A don't fall under Four Valleys, or do they?
I, they don't, they.
Okay, and then the private programs?
But they are nonprofits, so I was, I was thinking that we were dividing based on nonprofit compared to.
So this thing that says 37 private programs, those are nonprofits?
So I think 37 is then broken down further and each of them.
I see.
I know that you haven't had a chance to look at that as.
I didn't realize that.
So, I, you know, we are not that busy with programs that either aren't locally generated nonprofits or, um, our own meetings.
Okay, so we're, we actually do a lot of the waves.
No.
For the price of.
Uh, yeah, I would say maybe one a month, maybe two and a bigger month. You know, they're coming back, they went away, of course, completely for a while. Um, so I don't, I feel like the value of this conversation is already probably earned. We would have earned.
Okay, let's move on.
So I don't, I don't feel, I, I'm all about charging people more. I made my living doing that for a long time. I don't think that there's a whole lot of, um, benefit. Um, I also think that although we do have like all of this great system in place now and it's available to others now to use as well, like that's not the business that we have yet. Perhaps we will, but we also provide, you know, these are the tables and they've been here for all the time that the room has been here and nothing has been replaced or upgraded as far as that goes. That's the infrastructure that those people, uh, that are, that our users are using, so.
Okay.
Thank you. And to Kyle's point about other places with the new clinic, they have room now that they can offer some small group sessions. So, thanks. I don't know what they charge. Okay. Uh, let us go to number six.
Uh, the police contract, uh, pretty straightforward. Um, no increase, uh, from last year. We're on a fixed budget with them, a fixed contract rate with them for 24 and 25. Um, and then we would look at an increase that we renew for the next, uh, two years following 25, so 26 and 27. Um, uh, right now we are just showing the rent at 6,000. Like I said, we're trying to work out the details, um, about the increase. It's really in ACS's hands right now. Um, and so I most likely see that being a first quarter discussion. Um, we do have to make an increase there. Um, and then, uh, we are keeping the car towing and miscellaneous police items at 12,000. Actually tonight we'll be talking about one of those miscellaneous policing items that we're looking to fund for cyberbullying, um, discussion with parents here in Gerwood this fall. So, um, so yeah, those different things happening out there. So overall, uh, no increase here, mill rate, uh, 1.07 based on 23 assessments.
Any questions from Police Budget? The yearly last time, uh, the seventh item is discuss G B O S goals for 2024. And I don't know if there's any, I wasn't able to refresh my page at home on anything about goals, but Margaret had a nice, uh, list of each supervisor's potential, uh, tasks for the year, but that was really G B O S's body, but this is what it is in front of us. And we haven't had a chance as a board to either, uh, decide if we need a work session to talk about goals, but it would be, it's too late in this season. So 2024 would be something that, uh, could discuss, at least today to start that of what we'd like to see happen or get started in 2024. Mike, did you want to add anything to the list while we're looking at it or branch out from that?
Uh, yeah, I think maybe something else that we could fit under the other section is, uh, that I think would be helpful is, um, there are other communities, both nearby, um, through regionally and also across the state that face similar kind of problems to the ones we do within Gerwood as opposed to Anchorage more generally. And I think, um, sort of more outreach and a, um, a sort of better, you know, a, some kind of, establishing some kind of working relationship with, uh, with other communities would be helpful. Obviously we're starting to do that a bit with the Woodia and having the police, um, you know, having a police service shared is great for that. Um, but the same is true, Seward faces similar issues in housing, Homer faces similar issues in housing. Same is true in Southeast Alaska and several communities there. And there are other issues as well beyond housing that I think we have in commonality. So I think there's some, some sort of, uh, more formal outreach or at least doing that work would be helpful.
Thank you. Any other thoughts from the board? This could be an item that we, uh, visit, revisit or let sit for after this meeting.
I appreciate this list.
One thing I liked in the administrative items was, um, naming, we always, when something's new business, it's only new business usually once, then it goes to old. But I would mind calling, calling old business unfinished business. It's not, uh, always. But, uh, also with consent agenda items, which sometimes are applicable for us, sometimes aren't. And anything else? Well, as co-chair, if we can decide if we want to keep it on for future meetings and fall continue to sit, goals for 2024 could start anywhere. I guess. Okay, thanks, Margaret, for the list. And reading it, everybody. So then we have number eight, the additional budget work session, the eight if needed.
Yeah, so we put this on here in case, uh, you, right now you're only required to do two budget work sessions. Um, but you will not be voting on it till September. Um, the final budgets, we'll be talking about it briefly tonight. But if, uh, the board feels that they want to have additional discussions about the budgets before, uh, your regular meeting in September, we can, I try to find a date to go over it, that aspect.
Everyone, go.
I, I feel it might be helpful. There's a few questions I still have that I want to go away and think about. Um, I'm wondering if we can at least see if we can arrange a date and if there isn't a date or we decide that we don't need it, we can always not hold that meeting. And just have the discussions in our, um, September G B O S meeting.
Thanks, Mike.
I kind of feel like we're saying, uh, reviewing the cemetery and we're going, so, and it's a pretty obvious lack of public engagement in it. So I, I don't know that, uh, I don't know that it does seem to need for another work session. Like, get more public involvement and input if we just keep it as the, any remaining discussions is part of the regular, uh, meeting.
Thank you, Jennifer. Uh, and I recall last year, we had meetings with you, Kyle, or talking through different parts of the budget for each of our supervisor roles. And that helps to get us through these, but this, the last two meetings have felt pretty thorough and straightforward. So the only changes were mainly fire department, which is something I should closely watch. But I don't, um, if Mike feels okay with the, um, Kyle or Margaret, and then if there's anything else you can send to the board from that.
Sure.
Or just bring it up the next meeting, September.
No problem. I mean, from a staff perspective, I think the only one that we want to get confirmation on is that the board for the fire department has reviewed and approved their budget. And I know Chief West has been trying to work hard to get them to come together and meeting. Good to see Amanda here tonight. Hopefully they can push forward to have a meeting so that they can come. Um, and you know, you have the support of the, of the fire board for the budget that she's proposed.
Right, thanks, Kyle. Yeah, she said they need to post it two weeks ahead, the date. So I just like, they are coming to the deadline. So, cause I haven't, I've been asking and there haven't been a meet, haven't been a P O D.
I got a question. So our next, we'll vote on this on the 18th, is that right?
September, yes.
And 13th. Going to be traveling.
Okay. We have a quorum, which feels to hold a meeting. Can you call in?
Okay, you know.
Okay.
Good to know. Um, thank you, everyone, for, for all the feedback and comments. And as long as, like you said, Kyle, I feel that was the one item so far that stands out the most. That's the timeline, anyway, fire department. So I'll go to public comment. Our person's offering public comment must state their full name and address. Public comment is limited to three minutes. Is anyone here for public comment tonight? Person that added on after this, so. Otherwise I entertain a motion to adjourn. Also moved to second, second by Mike. Thank you, we are adjourned.
All right, see you in a bit.
In 50 minutes?
Yep.
Bye.